Good evening, this is December 8th meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
Recording in progress.
First up, we have a request for an extension.
Mr. Chairman, we have a letter from the applicant. He intends to conclude this application by opening permits for the work that was approved to bring the property into full compliance. And he says William J. Waters, Jr., in point contact with required additional information. And he requests the chairman for one-year extension.
There's your motion.
Yeah, I move that the, and this is on appeal number 2021-033-Juggev-Dugal, 38 Alberdy Road, Jamesport, SCTM number 600-48-1-10-20 APC zoning. I move that the appeal of Juggev-Dugal, originally granted August 12th, 2021, be extended to the period of one year, thus expiring August 12th, 2023, a variance and/or relief from chapter 301, section 30, subdivision 8, sub 2, where six-foot fence in front yard with minimum height required, height allowed is four feet, and where 12-foot privacy wall in rear yard is not permitted.
Second.
Mrs. Valeski.
Aye.
Valeski.
Aye.
You're very quiet. Otto Whitmar.
Aye.
Ms. Gazillo.
Aye.
Ms. DeBarnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so extension of being granted. Who's got the reserve decision? Laura E.
Sure. Reserve decision, appeal 2021-049, 45 Washington, NOCO LLC, 45 Washington Avenue, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-89-2-54.3, RB40 zoning, variances and/or relief from chapter 301, section 3B, accessory building, structure or use where habitable space in an accessory structure is not being customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal building or use.
Do you hear your motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. Mrs. Valeski.
Aye.
Ms. Whitmar.
Aye.
Ms. Gazillo.
Aye.
Ms. DeBarnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, young lady, you're up to go.
Okay, appeal 2022-039, HK Ventures, 4285 Middle Country Road, Calverton, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-116-1-2, industrial C zoning, variances and/or relief from town code chapter 301, section 123A, where proposed impervious surface coverage is 65.51% of the total lot area and maximum permitted is 60%, and where proposed building height is 38 feet to center line of roof peak and maximum permitted is 30 feet.
You're up to bat, are you going to turn me?
I am, sir.
Please state your name and your address.
Certainly, Keith Brown, Brown, Altman, Delio, 538 Port Hall Road, Suite 301 West, Elville, New York, 11747.
We have the floor.
Good evening, Chairman McLaughlin and members of the zoning board of appeals. First, thank you for hearing our application. I'm here tonight with respect to the area variance application by HK Ventures LLC to develop an industrial warehouse campus at the vacant property located at 4285 Middle Country Road in Calverton. With me tonight is our project team of experts, some of whom will be making a brief presentation to the board regarding the project. First, we have Ms. Jaclyn Pronto, PE of Key Civil Engineering, the project civil engineer, who could discuss the overall site plan and landscape. We have Mr. Alex Badalamante from BLD Architecture, the project architect. We then have Ms. Caitlin Kane of PW Grosser, the project engineering, environmental and engineering planner. Then Ms. Amanda LaRosa, who is Amanda? Oh, Josh, what's your last name? Josh Herman, excuse me. Josh Herman of Stonefield Engineering, our traffic expert. And Mr. Scott Johns are representatives of HK Ventures. As a matter of housekeeping, the public notices, mailing and posting were performed in accordance with the town code and affidavits were submitted to the zoning board secretary prior to getting underway this evening. In addition, the following documents were submitted to the clerk in support of the application. There was a memorandum by Brown, excuse me, Brown, Altman and Delio, which includes ZBA precedent, a color site plan rendering prepared by Key Civil Engineering dated August 22nd of 2022, an aerial photograph and color elevation renderings of the industrial warehouse facility prepared by BLD Architecture. Just by way of context, the property is located 4285 Middle Country Road in Calverton and situated on the south side of Middle Country Road, approximately 405 feet east of Fresh Pond Avenue and west of Edwards Avenue. The site is zoned industrial C and has a lot area of approximately 30.25 acres. The property is currently undeveloped and was previously used as agricultural land. Approximately 13.81 acres of the site is woodland and 16.42 acres are meadows and brushlands. The surrounding area can generally be characterized by large lot commercial and retail uses on the south side of Middle Country Road, interspread with agricultural and residential land uses to the north. West of the site is the Tractor Supply Company retail store, Sky Materials Site, and a former sand mining operation, and a single-family residence. Further west is the Stony Brook University incubator at Calverton, as well as the town-owned Epcot property. North of the property, on the opposite side of Middle Country Road, are agricultural and commercial land uses, such as a steakhouse and a bagel store. East of the property is an active sod farm, residential uses and industrial uses east of Francis Boulevard. Further east is FedEx Shipping Center, a gasoline station, farm equipment supplier, Moto One Long Island Motorsports Parks, and Splash Water Park. South of the property is a town-owned Epcot property. The applicant seeks to develop the property with a campus-style warehouse facility. Specifically, the project will develop eight warehouse buildings ranging in sizes from 44,000 square feet to 56,000 square feet. For the record, we note that the site plan application and supplemental EIS for this project is currently being reviewed by the town planning board. This evening, the applicant seeks only the following relief from this board. One, an area variance to allow for building height to be 38 feet, where 30 feet is required pursuant to town code, section 301-123 sub A. And the second variance is to permit an impervious surface coverage of 65.51%, where the maximum of 60% is permitted pursuant to town code, section 301-123A. As shown in the color site plan rendering and elevation submitted with the application and also before you on the easel to your immediate left, the site has been designed to mitigate against any potential impact that includes setbacks and landscaping far in excess of what is required under the town zoning code. We submit that the benefit to the applicant in granting the requested variances outweighs any possible detriment to the public health, safety, or welfare. The property is zoned industrial C, which allows a mix of light industrial warehouse development and office campuses in the area between Enterprise Park and the terminus of the Long Island Expressway. In addition, as previously discussed, the property is surrounded by other commercial industrial use properties. We submit that the project is consistent with the town zoning code intended, which is intended for development for this property, which is in character with the surrounding land uses. We also note that the project has been designed with enhanced setbacks and significant landscaping to mitigate any potential impact from its use. For example, the buildings will be set back a distance of 124.7 feet from Middle Country Road, where 30 feet is required, 195.2 feet from the rear yard property line, where 50 feet is required, and a setback of 121 feet from the eastside side yard where, and 100 feet, excuse me, from the westerly side yard, where 60 feet is required. In addition, the front yard will have two three-foot berms, and the applicant will be installing landscaping consisting of trees, shrubs, and grasses along Middle Country Road, as you can see in the rendering in front of you. Further, the applicant will be installing landscaping on both side yards, the rear yard, and throughout the property. We submit that the generous setbacks landscaping buffers and open space has been incorporated to design to preserve the rural appearance and minimize views into the property from Middle Country Road and adjacent parcels. With regard to the benefit to the applicant, we submit that the benefit cannot be achieved without variance relief. With respect to the height variance, as previously noted, a 38-foot building height is the minimum necessary to achieve interior ceiling height of 30 feet, which is the industry standard designed to accommodate current inventory shelving systems, which the applicant will be explaining momentarily. This benefit cannot be achieved without variance relief. I also note that the North Point application that's currently in with the town is asking for a height variance of 50 feet, so we're 12 feet below that. However, the building height will not have an impact to the surrounding area due to the enhanced setbacks, buffers, and landscaping, which will screen the warehouse buildings and preserve the rural appearance of the property. With regard to the impervious surface area, the applicant also requests variance of 5.51% for the impervious area. The need for this result results in the project's design that separates passenger vehicles from truck activity, which provides an overall safety and efficient benefit. As can be seen from the site plan, vehicular parking will be on both sides of the center drive aisle and the truck, sorry, and the truck loading, unloading, and truck access will be on the east and west sides of the building, as you can see in the color site plan that's on the, on the right. This will be discussed more by Jaclyn Pronto, our project engineer, and that this benefit cannot be achieved without variance relief. With regard to the size of the variance, in regards to the height of the building, the project has been designed to shield the buildings from view along Middle Country Road to the greatest extent possible, as well as the adjacent properties, through the use of the enhanced setbacks, buffers, berms, and landscaping throughout the property. As noted, the project will not change the character of the neighborhood, as the property will retain its appearance so all passersby. In addition, a 38-foot-high building height is the minimum necessary to achieve the 30-foot-high interior ceiling. As we discussed in the memorandum of support for the application, warehouse facilities across Long Island are being designed with building heights up to 50 feet, further the, as I mentioned, the North Point application before. With regard to the impervious surface, we submit that the 5.51% impervious surface variance is de minimis and significantly less than the relief that has been granted by this board for other commercial and industrial projects. For example, in the matter of Jay Petricelli Development Associates located at 420 East Main Street in Riverhead, appeal number 2019-032, granted on August 22nd of 2019, this board granted an impervious surface coverage variance of 85.6 feet, where 60%, sorry, 85.6% where 60% was required. In addition, in the matter of Christopher Piles, located at 45 Third Street in Riverhead, appeal number 2020-054, granted March 8th of 2021, so both recent applications, this board permitted impervious surface of 82%, where 60% was required. Copies of both of these decisions, along with the additional precedent, was provided in the application's memo of support submitted to the, with the application. The applicant's request is minimal and will not have an impact on the surrounding area or be a detriment to any nearby properties. With respect to the effect or impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood district, we submit that granting this application will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The increase in the building height is to achieve more cubic volume for storage and will not intensify the land use as such. The height of the buildings will not change the project projected volume of water usage, sanitary discharge, or traffic generation. And although minimum variance relief is needed for the impervious coverage to accommodate the driveways and loading areas, the overall project is below the maximum building coverage, where 40% is permitted, and we are proposing 3.1, sorry, 31.31%, roughly more than 8% below what, what we could do. It also exceeds, the project exceeds the minimum landscape requirements, where a 20% contiguous landscaping in front yard is required, and we're providing 23.15%. And finally, we're providing greater front, rear, and side yard setbacks than is required under the town zoning code. As discussed, the buildings will be shielded from view through the increased setbacks, buffers, and landscaping, and will be, the rural appearance will be preserved to passersby along Middle Country Road. Further, stormwater will be contained and recharged on-site, and the overall project will provide rooftop solar panels that will put out, provide an output of 2.4 megawatts to the community solar program. And finally, we submit that the extent of the need of the variances are not self-created. As this board well knows, the New York law is clear that this factor alone is not controlling, as the variance relief is not substantial, will not change the character of the neighborhood, nor will it cause a detriment to any nearby properties. And in light of balancing the other factors in favor of the applicant, the benefit to the applicant in granting the application outweighs any possible detriment to the community. As such, we respectfully request the board to grant the application. On behalf of my client, thank you for your time and your consideration. With that, I'd like to call Ms. Jaclyn Pronto as our first witness to, to provide some testimony and answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you kindly. Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth is helping you up.
I do.
Kindly state your name and your address.
Jaclyn Pronto, Key Civil Engineering, 664 Blue Point Road, Holtsville, New York, 11742. What was your last name? Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Jaclyn Pronto, as indicated by Mr. Brown, we have enhanced landscaping in all areas where feasible. What is driving the need for our variance in regard to the impervious surface is truck circulation. Tractor trailers and trucks are going to enter into the property and circulate in a counterclockwise direction. In doing so, they require a large turning radii, which require wider asphalt areas for the trucks to maneuver. That is really what is resulting in the additional impervious surface. In addition, by separating the cars and the trucks, we're creating some additional pavement area within the center of the buildings, but we feel it's a better plan to keep the separation between passenger vehicles and the truck operations. On the east side of the buildings, the buildings on the east side of the property are designed to handle tractor trailers. They have loading bays with a four-foot reveal, where a large 55-foot tractor trailer will be able to circulate and back in. On the west side of the property, those buildings are situated with overhead doors to allow for a box truck to park adjacent to that overhead door and unload, and you'll see that in the drawing indicated with a cross hatch striping. The front landscape buffer ranges between 55 feet and 130 feet in width. In addition, we're providing a berm of three foot in, in height, where only a 20-foot buffer is required, so it's a significant increase in that requirement. The landscaped area in the berm will be planted with evergreen trees of varying species. There's red cedars, white cedars, arborvitae, various evergreen-type trees. They're going to be planted at a seven-to-eight-foot height, and ultimately, they will mature to 40-to-60-foot high. Typically, these evergreen trees grow between one to two foot a year, so they'll, they'll grow into, to size. In addition, on the sides of the property, we've enhanced those buffers as well. There's a 10-foot requirement. The majority of our side buffers are about 44 feet, so much bigger in significance to create more, more separation between our neighbors. And in addition, the rear, which also only requires a 10-foot buffer, we're providing 31.9 foot as a buffer, but our recharge basin is also located back there. So when you add the recharge basin, in addition, the buffer is significantly larger. It would be 146.1 foot in total width for that rear buffer. The rear 31-foot, as well as the curb line adjacent to the, to the drive aisle in the rear, will also be planted with evergreen trees. They'll also be seven-to-eight foot in tall, in height, and will mature at a 40-to-60-foot tall. Also, as indicated, the building area is less than what is required, as well as contiguous landscape area is more than what is required. We've also provided landscaping within the central area where the passenger vehicles are, are located to provide shade trees and, and shrubs and more landscaping to break up the paved area and create a nice enhanced feeling. I'll take any questions that the board may have.
How many, how many units are you proposing on this property?
One question I, I, bear with me and I'll get you that answer.
Jackie time. We have all nine.
I don't know about all these guys, one on them. Um, sorry, it's one of these sheets. Okay.
They have two phases listed on the loop net, on the survey.
Okay, so, total number, so on the, the smaller tenants, we have, there's 10 tenants. So on the buildings that are on the west, there's 10 tenants per building, so that would be 40 on the west side, and on the east side, there's six for the first three buildings, so those are larger square footage, those tenants, because they're receiving the tractor trailer. They're going to be for bigger supply, and the last building is four, so it'd be 19 larger-sized tenants.
Do you have specific tenants in mind already?
No.
So, so the clients are going to build it hoping they can attract
That's correct.
Certain storage facilities, delivery.
Correct.
That type of thing, so, so that's why there's phase one and phase two.
Right.
Phase one, you're going to see how it kind of goes, kind of thing, and then, so, when you're dealing with impervious surfaces, um, you know, I know you have plenty of landscaping and turning radiuses. Couple of things that I just was thinking about looking at the site plan, you, did they ever consider an acceleration lane? So when those big tractor trailers pull out in front of 25, that's going to be a problem there, a big problem.
We are, there's going to be a, a signal at the intersection, so it'll be a
There's going to be a light light?
Yeah.
Green light?
Correct, yeah. Like, has anything, yes, there's going to be a traffic signal located at our driveway, so there will be
Oh goodness, more traffic.
No issues with trucks turning. We also have truck turning movements that have been submitted to the planning department, happy to provide them to this board as well, which shows the truck turning movement and the necessary pavement area for them to make those turns.
So we have no particular client in mind, but yet we want to try to maximize the property as much as possible, and I understand that, I understand rental income to a property, but you probably could get 60% lot coverage and redesign some of the buildings and, or eliminate something to that effect.
When you're looking at a property that's over a million square feet, 5% is, is not an insignificant square footage per se, but when it, from a percentage standpoint, it is de minimis, it's less than a 10% variance that we're seeking.
It's two acres?
Less than that, it's about 72.
Yeah, so, just, just throwing thoughts out.
Yeah, I, I can let the client speak about their tenants, and there, there was a large study done with the need in this area for tenant, you know, for space like this, so.
I mean, I know the Picomme Building's a couple down, and they do very well, and they have, most of the time, full occupancy, but it's an antiquated setup, and, you know, your facility probably would be much nicer.
Mm-hmm.
Lot coverage, it's, it's something that should be thought, talked about, or at least I think it should be talked about.
Well, just to be clear, it's not lot coverage, so in terms of the footprint of the building, we're under that square footage, so it's impervious surface.
Right.
But there will be a traffic light, you say?
Yes.
Okay.
It's under review with DOT currently.
DOT, is it looking at that?
I'm sorry?
DOT?
Yes.
Okay, acceleration limits, I thought were being called. It's not really our job to do that. I'm just bringing it up.
It's, it's not required, it hasn't been requested by the county.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything before we let it go? No?
Okay, thank you. So next, I'd like to bring up Scott Johns, the representative for the applicant, HK Ventures. Scott?
You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth is helping you up.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Scott Johns, 147 Steego Road, Great Neck, New York, 11024.
What town?
Great Neck. Great Neck, New York?
Pull the microphone.
Great Neck, New York?
There you go.
J-O-H-N-S. Good evening, gentlemen. So, rather than repeat everything, I'm going to try and keep it short for you.
Sounds good.
So, the height variance is predicated on the current industry standards with the idea of increasing the cubic space that is offered with a greater height, or greater clear height to, for users of the space. The question is, why is the, the clear height a critical metric in modern warehousing? So, in today's warehousing, rack storage is what is used versus, you know, gross square area, which was, what was used for bulk storage in historical developments. The modern racking system uses a 60, 56, 64, and 72-inch rack size, with 72-inch being the most common size in the US, and that's what's required for the 64-inch pallets that are most common. A 30-foot building height allows for a maximum clear height of 28, uh, a maximum clear height of 28 feet, if not less. At 28 feet, the height pallet racks are limited to a four-unit height in the 72-inch size, whereas the additional four feet would allow for a 25% increase to a five pallet rack, which is a 25% increase on a 14% building height increase. The trend in required clear height for warehouse space has increased over 20 feet in the last 30 years, where large users are requiring a minimum of 36 feet and to a height of 55 feet. Clear heights for smaller independent operations that we're looking to target with this development show a need for a minimum of 32-foot in clear height. The taller clear height offers in an economy of scale and usable cubic footage of the warehouse space, that's just a, a simple requirement in today's industrial space. This allows the development to avoid becoming obsolete as this height requirement trend increases. The current space that's available in the area tends to be in the 16-foot height, which continues to be vacant, as it's not a usable height for most users. Whereas height, with buildings that have a clear height of over 30 feet, show an occupancy of 98% currently. So it essentially requires the 38-foot height for this type of building to achieve the 32-foot interior height that's necessary for the racking systems. And then, as to your questions that you had asked Jaclyn, we have been exploring tenants that property is currently listed on the LoopNet. We've fielded a number of inquiries as to availability of space, but we are not taking any firm commitments at this point, as the ultimate fate of the project is unknown. The traffic signal out front was approved by the DOT about a year ago. It's going to be a synchronized light, hopefully to avoid that increase in traffic on that If there are any other questions, I'm happy to.
I, I'm just surprised that, that kind of heavy traffic on 25, that road has been destroyed by sand mining and all the other things that go on there. I, I, I just wish the DOT would address that somehow, repave it or whatever, it's just terrible. It's like a military operation heading that way.
Sure, and the heavy traffic.
My car is damaged every day from that truck traffic, because I live in Waiting River, and that's my ride home. because I live in Wading River and that's my ride home. And it's a horror show. But, okay.
It's okay.
Thank you.
It's not your fault.
No, but blame me anyway.
They'll contribute to it.
Oh, so Keith brings up a good point. So on the east end, there's currently only one warehouse that fits this need, which is for the smaller tenants. This is focused towards contractors, small supply companies, you know, users who are going to utilize a 5,000-square-foot space, not the 100 or 200 or 300,000-square-foot space you would see with the logistics center. There's currently a severe lack of space of this nature anywhere within 20 miles. So it's our hope that we can provide this. And the level of interest we've seen to date has been exceptional.
So do you envision that these separate tenancies in each loading ramp, will there be offices inside each of these storage facilities?
There's a small portion of space in the front portion of each tenant space.
Is there a regular door to get in and have bathrooms and that kind of thing?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, well, in addition to the office space, the units on the, I believe it's the west side of the property, the smaller units, will have a garage door that'll allow box trucks to pull into the unit, which is another feature that's missing in all of the available space that's out there now. So you'll be able to store your vehicles inside, bring your vehicles inside for loading and unloading, which is a significant increase to the features that people are looking for in this sort of space now.
So do you envision like construction trades?
For the most part, we look for...
Do you like by them?
Yes. It'll be plumbers and contractors and, you know, people of that nature that store material, that store vehicles. On the west side, the east side has the larger spaces, which will be ancillary storage spaces for retail operations and things of that nature.
In addition to storage, does there be some manufacturing done there also?
Currently, I haven't had much interest in manufacturing uses.
Cabinet making?
It's possible. It's possible. I wouldn't say no, but I can't...
Oh, yeah, just... I know it's needed. I do know it's needed.
Oh, absolutely. So if you look at the rendering, on the left, you'll see that smaller building attached to the leftmost building, which is a commissary, which we hope will reduce traffic coming on and off the property so people have a place to, you know, take their breaks, pick up food, you know, reducing the number of trips in and out of the site.
Would that be gated at night?
Yes.
Security cameras, the whole thing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Tim. Next, we'd like to call on Josh Herman. Would you have a question here?
You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so I'll be gone.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Sure, good evening. My name is Josh Herman, that's spelled H-E-R-M-A-N. I work for Stonefield Engineering located at 584 Broadway, Suite 310, New York, New York, 10012. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for hearing this application. So my company, my team has conducted a traffic impact study as part of the seeker process for the development. We evaluated both the first phase as well as the full build-out of the project. And as part of the first phase, we, based on our analyses, there would not be an impact to traffic on the surrounding roadway network. As part of the second phase, we did evaluate an impact to one of the intersections, that's Middle Country Road and Edwards Avenue. But we've proposed a signal timing modification that would improve the operation there. In addition, as, not as part of this project, but as an aside, the state DOT is undertaking, or has a plan to undertake, a project to improve that, the operations of that intersection as well. They are planning to widen the intersection and add turning lanes there to improve the operation.
They certainly need something to do there.
Are you talking about Edwards?
Edwards.
Edwards and Middle Country, yes.
It's a horror show.
Yes, so that is currently in the works by the state, not as part of this project, just as one of their own infrastructure improvement. And as Mr. Brown mentioned, the state has approved a traffic signal for the driveway along Middle Country Road. So that negates the need for an acceleration lane since traffic would be stopped when trucks would be exiting the property. With that, if anyone has any questions related to traffic.
Whatever influence you got, get that road repaved. Okay. Anybody have any questions? Off you go. Next up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just in conclusion, you know, this project has been well vetted by planning department staff as well as the planning board. We put a lot of effort into the current design, looked at it every which way in sundown. And the two variances that we're seeking tonight are the result of all of that work. If there was a way that we could get around those variances, you know, we would have... It's just impossible in terms of making sure that this project will be viable. There is literally, as Mr. Johns said before, nothing like this on the east end. Gobreski Airport is the closest thing to it. It has its issues. The garage doors are not adequate height. And there's just a real need. We did a market study to look at that. I know that's really not the basis for your determination, but we provided you with the precedent for the impervious surface. We've explained why the height variance is necessary. You know, just to note, overall, it just makes for a more efficient use of the buildings with that height variance and results ultimately in less warehouse buildings being needed by being able to get that adequate height. So with that, we hope you look favorably on this application.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Did the planning staff give you like a summary report that they had their observers on, what they looked at? Did they make any suggestions to you?
During the process? I mean, we started this process over two and a half years ago. So yes, is the answer.
Well, I'd like to read some of their reports, but that's okay for now. Thank you.
Well, we're certainly not going to give a decision tonight, but thank you for all the information you guys have brought up to us. And we'll do a little homework and see you at the next meeting.
Great. And you have the memo that we submitted and all the expert reports. So by all means, take a look at that. Well supports the application.
A little reading to do. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah. Anybody on Zoom for this?
That's my associate, Matthew. Yep. That's my associate.
In the parking lot?
No, on Zoom. It's a parking, no. Actually, he's working from home.
It's not allowed, isn't it, I guess?
Okay.
Hello, Matthew.
All right, whoever's got this, let's move this to the next meeting, which is June... January 12th.
Hi, this is GMNA appeal regarding the appeal of a...
HK.
2022-039, I moved the appeal of HK Ventures LLC, 4285 Middle Country Road, Calden, SCTM number 600-116-1-2. The adjournment on the next meeting, which is...
January 12th.
January 12th.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Mrs. Zueski?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we'll see you folks, January 12th.
Thank you very much. Have a nice holiday. You too.
Can you dig up staff reports on that? Thomas wants to see his staff reports. Oh, Thomas, it all... Oh, I didn't know that.
Appeal 2022-040, Dariush Alahi, 180 Creek Road, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-29-1-33. RV AD zoning for variances and/or relief from town code, Chapter 301, Section 291B. We are proposed side yard accessory setback as four feet when 25 feet are required.
Who's to be heard on this matter? Up the podium and put the microphone so we can hear you.
Good evening.
Lawson. Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so I'll be gone.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Dariush Alahi, 180 Creek Road, Wading River, New York, 1179.
State your case.
I live on Creek Road, as I just stated, and there are approximately 40 houses on that road. The size of the houses, the physical area is approximately the same. There's one, maybe a double lot. And when I walk around, I notice that at least six or seven sheds were visible to my eye. Just walking around, some in the front of the house, which I'm told is not allowed, and some on the side. So I went to Home Depot and inquired whether I could have a shed built, and they recommended a builder. He came by and he looked at the property and he told me I was allowed 140 some yards square feet. And he recommended eight-by-12 to be built on-site. So I paid him the money, he came. And just when he came, my neighbor, Mr. Hoffman, was there. And he says, "What are you doing?" Talking, he goes, "Hmm." He says, "Okay, go ahead." So we built a shed. And about two or, it took about two hours. About three hours later, Mr. Hoffman came to me and said, "I don't know why I agree. I don't want to, this is against the law. You can't have it against my property. I want you to tear it down." I said, "You want me to tear it down? I just built it like four hours ago." So after two or three days, I went back to the builder and I told him that Mr. Hoffman says I needed at least four feet. So he came by and measured it again and he said, "I'll build, I will build you a nine by, no, sorry, six by 16, which is still 96 square feet, and you'll be at least four feet from this property." So he came and tore down the old shed and was, the new old shed, and was about to start a new one, then Mr. Hoffman came back and said, "No, there's one other law that you have to abide by," and I wasn't sure. So he was quite upset. So I said, "Look, let me go to the town building department and ask for guidance." I went to the building department, I spoke to one of the supervisors, and he said, "Bring me your survey." The survey was done in 2019. And I had some repairs in the meantime. So he said, "No, you need a new survey." So I got a new survey in August. I took it back. And he took him maybe two or three weeks to respond to me in writing and said that, "No, I'm not allowing it because you need..." Didn't quite understand what he said. But what I think you should, I'm going to refuse this, but I suggest that you ask for a variance. So I'm asking for a variance. I do note that, as I said, there's at least six or seven. In fact, one of the biggest shed is Mr. Hoffman, he's sitting right in front. He may have, that may have been done, I don't know, 20, 30 years ago. But there is one that was done within the last six months, 208. And I have a picture of those two, if you care to see them. I know where those are taught. So I'm respectfully asking if I could have my builder or myself build a shed, six feet by 16, which is 96 feet, and the height will not be more than eight. And I think Mr. Hoffman, if I understand his position correctly, is against this because it obstructs his side view. So I am asking if it could be a variance with respect to this shed.
So Mr. Hoffman is still not happy?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Hoffman is still not happy?
As far as I know, Mr. Hoffman is very unhappy.
Mr. Hoffman?
Okay, you'll have your moment.
Okay, so he'll have a chance to speak.
I'm sorry?
He'll have a chance to speak. So we heard your story.
I don't know what else I can say.
Okay.
Okay. Let's have Mr. Hoffman up and you can have a seat for a moment. Thank you. All right, Mr. Hoffman, if you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so I'll be gone.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Paul Hoffman, H-O-F-F-M-A-N, 176 Creek Road, Wading River.
Okay.
Good evening. First, I'd like to address the conversation. Without any prior notice, that shed that Mr. Alahi was referring to showed up and they installed a shed. He was determined to put a shed up that day. I said, "I believe you need a permit for that." I didn't know anything about variance at the time. He was going to put a shed. He was either going to be on the dune or in between the houses he was putting a shed up. So it's not like, "Yeah, go ahead." I wouldn't do that. But the other part of that was, I did attempt to speak to him after it. I had some time to look it up on your website, which is actually very good. And I told him, "Hey, look, you need a permit, and it looks like you may need a variance for this." And again, we had to go to code enforcement. That's why I believe the shed had to be taken down. After that, they began taking the shed down. And that's kind of where we're at right now. And they were going to put up another one. I said, "You don't have the permit, you don't have the variance." And sure, I was upset. And I think what upset me is the line, "It's my property and I can do what I want." It's, there are rules that you have to live by in a modern society. But I want to start with, or continue with something. If you're familiar with Wading River, Creek Road, we're just west of the... We're just west of the town beach. These are small lots.
I live up the block.
Okay, so you're familiar with those who aren't?
I've been going here since I was 12.
Me too. So if you imagine beachfront properties, they're very narrow. Houses are built very close to each other. So I did take some pictures and I'd like to just let you have them or see them if you'd like because a picture tells a thousand words. And I also drew our house on the survey, in a large survey. So I don't know if you'd like to look at them, but I do have them. Bring them up? So the first one is our houses, of how closely they are together. Because the shed, he's...
Well, you just leave these with us. Go back to the microphone.
Okay. See, yes. So the first picture there of the houses is where the shed originally was put and where he was proposing to put another shed. Looking at that, you can see that our houses are very close together. In fact, the decks are less than 10 feet.
Some of these wood decks and, you know, I'm looking at the survey here, Mr. Hoffman. Are any of these structures yours or some of his over the line?
Yeah, so the...
Are there any encroachments?
I don't know. They're possibly, if you're looking at the houses, these houses have been there many years. The properties are kind of odd, the property lines. And it is possible, in fact, Mr. Alahi said the small portion of our deck was on his property.
It is.
And insisted that we leave it there. I will take it off if it might change today. But if you notice on the other side, there's a patio and stairs that encroach onto the neighbor's property. So that happens on these lots.
Well, that's what happens when they're built without permits or zoning at the time.
Well, those are legal structures on the properties.
They're pre-existing non-conforming structures, but there are, when there's an encroachment like that and it crosses over the line into another property, that could create problems. And most of the time, people just kind of live with it.
Yeah.
Let's put it that way. You'd have a lot of fun getting another mortgage, I'll tell you that.
Well, I, yeah, and I'll correct that if it needs to be.
Or trying to sell it.
Well...
Title search.
Oh, I see what you're saying. But, okay, so the point is, I'll correct it if it has to be. These structures have been there, that, as long as I can remember. My in-laws owned it previously. I don't even know how many years. I don't even know how many years it's been like this.
Has he considered any other areas for that shed?
The only other place that I could see is, he did indicate there are sheds in the driveway, and it's the only reasonable place to put any sheds. There's simply, if you look at that...
So underneath the deck by the road, you're saying underneath?
Yeah, and if it's five feet off the property line, that's not my concern. So I just wanna go back to my notes. So I'm assuming some of the board relies on this variance application that was filled out. And I'm just compelled to correct a few things. Was a variance ever applied for before? The answer is yes. It was checked yes and then crossed out. As you can see in the other photos that I have, variance was given some years ago, and construction began. Turning a cottage into a house. First picture's the old.
The old house before it was redone?
Correct.
And that's the new house, okay.
So a variance was, and it enlarged the deck, the house, and added a second floor. So it was an extension. It's not just a renovation. It was an extension, a renovation, expansion, and a new deck area. As the property stands today, almost the entire usable lot is covered with a house, decks, stairs, and driveway. Page six, there is enough room. There is not enough room. That's why we're here tonight. As indicated on the survey, the shed would be six feet from Mr. Alahi's house, not the ten as required, from two sixty-seven one B. And a mere eleven feet from our entrance door, and four feet from a deck. That is on our property, even if I remove that sliver.
Do you have a survey of your property?
Not with me, no. I...
Because I would like to see it.
I don't have it with me. I never did one. It was in the family for many years. So I don't have it.
We don't need it tonight, but...
I would like to see it.
Okay. This is not a near miss of the building code. It is four feet too close to another structure, and it's twenty-one feet or more. Because that deck is not gonna be touching his... I mean, the shed, the way they describe it, it's built onto the deck. It would have to be at least six inches off the railing, I would think, and it's got a roof overhang. So it's probably gonna be closer than that. So that would be a concern too. And then, I mean, I don't... The environmental assessment form, seven and thirteen should be checked yes. Question two of four, question fourteen should be checked shoreline and wetland. Question sixteen should be yes. We are in a VE flood zone, special flood hazard area. Look, I'm not here to give anybody a hard time. I've known Dariush Alahi a very long time. We've always had cordial relationships. There are just some times when things go over the top, so to speak. And this is over the top. It is just simply too close to our house. It is not gonna block my view. I'm looking at the side of his house anyway. It is a safety concern. And I think the wording that you use is a detriment, is what they decided, be a detriment. A better choice is the driveway. That's the only reasonable choice. I couldn't imagine doing this to a neighbor, sticking a shed, where, when he first put it, my grill opened and touched it. I could literally walk across the shed and then hop onto his property. It's just not a reasonable thing. So if you had any other questions, I have a flood map too. I have a picture of the original shed too, if you'd like to see that.
How far away is this shed from your house, actual house?
The actual shed from our front door, the door we enter, will be approximately ten feet.
Let's see the picture. And you have no problem if he moves it in front of the house, so to speak, on a Creek Road side?
You can't have an accessory structure in the front yard without a variance. See, you can go down that whole block, and I can point out hundreds of violations.
Creek Road's unique. Our fronts of our house are sort of like our backyard. More people traverse the front along the beach than the back. And basically, the front yard gets used by the backyard. Also, I do wanna clarify one thing, which was said. It's kind of...
That was there.
Our deck, I mean, apologies. My shed was not a shed. It is a cottage. It's the original legal living structure that was built over seventy years ago. Mr. Alahi knows it's not thirty years old. It's been there as long as it predates his house, and it's been there forever. I mean, and there's several of these on the block. It's not a shed. It's not near anybody's prop... building structure. It's not a safety concern, is the point.
So, Mr. Hoffman, it seems like the roof is like the roof on the one that he built. It's like right up to your deck.
It was over the property line, on our deck. With the shadow line, you can't see...
Let's say he took that down, and he did, right?
I was...
He took that down?
He was compelled to, yes, yeah.
Okay, and now he's proposing a shed against...
His property.
His wood deck again, but now he's four foot away.
From our...
Would it be the same height?
I believe so. I don't know. I don't know the size of that.
He says it's gonna be eight foot high. So that other shed that was there, that was probably eight foot also.
Well, that's... Well, you have to clarify. Eight feet walk in, or eight feet to the peak of the roof?
Well, I would think eight foot, just to the inside of the...
Right, so the roof's gonna be, what, twelve feet high?
It could be, yeah.
Again, I...
So I can understand your concern that it's kind of on top of you. And, you know, I would hope he would think of another alternative for storage.
Me too, because, again, I would never...
But there are a lot of issues there. I see a lot of encroachments and decks crossing over on other people's properties. It could get really messy as neighbors want to live next to each other in peace.
And that's why...
And you have to try to compromise with him somehow, to come up with a compromise.
I think the compromise is put it in the driveway, right?
He would need a variance for that.
I have no problem with that.
Well, of course not. But you can't have an accessory structure in the front yard.
Understood. But he could apply for a variance.
He could, but he's already into it for a new survey and all the other things that he's done. Three hundred buck fee, you know. He can come back with a re-submission. And certainly, we'd like to see the both of you work it out.
I would love to.
You know, I don't know what a solution would be.
Yeah.
Well, bottom line, this goes back to the builder, who should have had a half a brain to know that it's an illegal structure the guy was putting up. He should have never put that thing up.
Well, when they built these seventy years ago, I don't think they were...
No, I'm talking about the shed.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
I mean, where's his brain?
I agree completely.
I mean, actually, he's taking the man's money and putting a shed on top of your property.
I completely agree. I went out there the first time. I didn't know, because I wasn't familiar. It was without warning or foretold to me, and I probably would have looked it up and said, "You need to do this before you put a shed in." I don't know why not, but the bottom line is, it wasn't brought to my attention. It showed up. They were determined to put it up that day. And when you see that finished, and it looks like that, and it's on your... It literally was on our property. But it's just not reasonable or safe.
Again, you know, I fought the builder. He should have never, ever... If you're a builder in this town, you should have some sense of the rules.
I agree. Yeah, I don't disagree at all.
Right, okay. No, that's...
I don't want to be here. I live by the golden rule. I would never do this to a neighbor and put this thing... Anybody that saw it thought it was unreasonable. I'm not gonna say. But again, I would love to work it out. I don't know how.
Okay.
I tried to speak to him. He said, "We'd let the town decide." Here we are.
Okay. All right. I don't think we're gonna make a decision tonight, but January twelfth, we certainly will.
All right, so we'll be traveling then. I guess you don't need us back for any...
If anything, I would hope you try to work it out with him.
All right.
And he tries to work it out with you.
And if you do, would you submit a letter to that effect, where you know what your position was?
Sure, sure. I mean, is... Well, I'll have to speak to him first. But is a possible solution in the driveway?
No.
No?
Not without variance.
He would need another variance. He'd have to start all over again.
With the survey and all? I mean, he's got one...
He'd have to position the structure in the front yard as saying proposed, and have another hearing, repost everything.
So that's difficult, too.
So, you know, I don't know why he needs a shed. The house seems to be a pretty good size. I don't know what's in his garage. Maybe he can clean out his garage, maybe make some space in there. I don't know. I don't know what's acceptable or not acceptable.
There's a lot of...
Mr. Hoffman, excuse me. This picture that shows the shed, is this shed still up?
No, that's gone now.
That's why I'm saying the builder should have had some responsibility for this.
This survey here, where it shows four feet off, I guess, your property line or his property line, is that...
No, no. This was taken down.
I know, but was that... Did that shed fit into this six-foot-wide proposed area that he asked for a shed?
No, that's... The shed was spun around the other direction, so the doors would have been facing his house. And it was pushed again. That's right up against our house, our deck. That's my...
Well, this shed, though, that's proposed on this...
That's... So the idea is he'd spin the shed around and push it back against his railing instead of mine. But it's still ten feet, roughly ten feet, I would guess.
Okay, so if he does that, what kind of vision or what are you looking at there?
Right now, it's the side of his house. It's not the visual. It's the... What goes in a shed? My concern is what will be stored in the shed. All right, I just, again, I... He has a lot of stuff, and he needs more room for stuff. So that's my concern, is a fire hazard. That's my biggest concern. It's just too close to our property.
But I guess the grill right up against your rail's okay?
Well, you can understand my angst at the whole thing.
I understand, but I mean, you're all living in danger over there.
I got it, and you do, you know, goes with this... You know, living there is not what everybody thinks. You gotta go with the flow, and we do. It's a very interesting place to live. We've been there for a year. And you do the best you can, and you gotta... You take what comes, being beachfront. And there's a lot, but there are certain things you don't do, and this, to me, is one of them.
Well, let's hope you guys can work it out.
I will try.
Just, I think it's two or three houses west of you. Is that the one that's gonna be demolished?
Yes, two houses. So there's one, and then the next is the house that was being taken down. And then they put a stopper. They didn't have a permit.
Okay.
Or variance, or anything. Yeah, that's been interesting.
All right, okay. Mr. Chairman, respect... You have anything else to say? Please step up.
I'd just like to make sure that...
Microphone down.
I just wanna make sure that you understand. If it's approved that I can build a new six-foot by sixteen-foot shed, the roof will never be over his property. He just stated that he thought the old shed that was torn down, the roof was over his property. The new shed, if it's approved, the roof will never be over his property.
Who was your builder?
His name is Lou.
Who?
Lou. I don't know his last name.
Well, he should have never built that shed.
I think he raised his head.
As I said, I went to Home Depot. I asked for a recommendation. They sent me to this. I didn't know just that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, well. Okay, so let's put this over to the January twelfth. January twelfth. I move, Mr. Chairman, we move this appeal to January twelfth. All right. What do we got here? We got Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zaweski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So see you folks on the twelfth. Thank you. And hopefully, we can get this straightened out beforehand. Okay. All right, here you go, young man.
Appeal twenty-two dash zero four one, Richard and Jean Marie Farrell, twenty-four Marine Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Act Number six hundred dash thirteen dash three dash fifty-five, RA forty zoning, for variances and/or relief from town code chapter three oh one, section eleven, where proposed side yard setback is five feet when twenty-five feet is required.
Kindly raise your right hand if you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so I'll be gone.
Yes, I do.
State your name.
Jennifer Leeds, Leeds Expediting Services, with an office at twenty-eight North Country Road, Mount Sinai, New York.
Off you go.
L.E.E.D.S. The owners of this property, Richard and Jean Marie Farrell, are proposing to construct a one-story addition to their home. We are asking forty-five-foot yard minimum setback variance for the proposed one hundred and sixty-two square foot addition. Currently, there is no access to the basement from inside this home. The purpose of this addition is to enclose the outside cellar entrance. And this way, they could get to the basement from the inside of the home. This addition will enlarge the existing dining room and kitchen area, and include a staircase to the basement. They are also proposing some interior renovations and alterations. They're proposing to move one of the bedrooms to the downstairs. Presently, the Farrell's are spending time in this home and their home in Miami, but they would like to renovate this house so it can be their primary home. Jean Marie's family has owned a summer home on the street for many years. Originally, her brother had purchased this home. When her parents passed, the brother decided to move down the block to the parents' home, and Jean Marie purchased this home with her husband. The neighborhood is largely comprised of smaller-sized parcels. And as such, any proposed additions to these homes would require variances, as they're all non-conforming lots to the A forty zone. We don't feel that this addition would have a negative effect on the neighborhood. I did not have any negative comments from any of the neighbors after mailing the letters. And if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can be a little tight with that fence there, though, that PVC fence. Are they gonna move that fence?
Yes, that fence will come down with the gate. Yeah, it'll be pushed back.
Towards the property line.
Oh, I thought you meant the one going towards the thing. They could take that down. They also wanted me to let the board know that they will propose additional plantings. There's a lot of vegetation along that property line, but they'll propose some more.
Have you heard from any of the neighbors? Have they complained to you?
No, I had one neighbor who doesn't live there right now, so she couldn't get the certified letter. And she had contacted the Farrell's, because the post office was gonna charge her thirty dollars to send her that letter. So I emailed her everything, and I have an email from her stating her support for the application.
That's good. Can you send that email to our center?
Yeah, I have a copy here for you.
Send it beyond the audience, sir.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Nobody?
I did have pictures and plans. I don't know if you want them...
Bring it in with paperwork.
We'll fill up those cabinets.
Towing trees.
Towing trees, not me.
Do you need me to save any of this stuff, or just save it for me, the stuff that we have to take for January twelfth? You have your own. That's what I'm saying.
Do you need his copies?
Okay. Okay. Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Anybody have any other questions? Okay, Otto, off you go.
Appeal number twenty-two dash zero forty-one, I moved at the appeal of Richard and Jean Marie Farrell, twenty-four Marine Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Act Number six hundred, dash thirteen, dash three, dash fifty-five, RA forty zoning, for variance and relief from town code chapter three oh one, section eleven, where proposed side yard setback is five feet when twenty-five is required. Be granted in accordance with the application sketches or the amendments they two have been asked filed with the building inspector.
Oh, second. Good. All right, Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zaweski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. See, appeal's been granted?
Thank you.
You can give them the good news down there.
Yes, thank you so much.
You're quite welcome.
Having his name. Have a nice night.
This is what happens when the chairman forgets his glasses, it's all right.
Appeal 2022-042, Nargis, Second Skaya, 23 Eightbells Road, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-13-4-25, RA 40 zoning, for variances and or relief from town code chapter 301, section 11, where proposed side yard setback is 0.01 feet when 25 feet required. Proposed front yard setback 19.7 feet when 50 feet required. Proposed combined side yard setback 15.58 feet when 55 feet required, and proposed interior surface 23.7% when 15% required.
Okay, raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so we got it.
I do.
State your name.
My name's Jeff Zong, my address is 215 Roanoke Avenue. I have the postings.
State your case.
Not sure if you guys recall, but we were here two years ago for this project, this property. But due to COVID, the homeowner has been using the house more of a regular basis, and right now, the current, the current layout is, you know, it's a small house, small, small property. It's a, currently, it's a two-bedroom, and they're looking to add, the addition is basically proposing a master bedroom with a second bathroom, so they have the master bath and a more usable closet. The existing floor plan, the one-bedroom would not be a bed, there's not even a closet, it's not really even a bedroom, it's like a nine-by-10 room. So, due to the constrictions of the site, we really can't go out the back, the rear of the property, because you would have no access to get to that bedroom, so the bedroom's going to have access off the living area. As you know, the eight-foot, eight-foot offset in the rear of that addition is to the, you know, the property to the north. In fact, the homeowner did have a conversation, and I actually had a conversation with the homeowner just to the north, that it puts this proposed addition, and she basically gave her blessing, as long as we keep the bushes along the property lines, and it will screen, you know, the proposed addition greatly.
Didn't the neighbor send us a letter?
She sent me a letter to the-
Everything was okay. Okay, go ahead.
And, yeah, I'll just sum it up that, you know, we're really looking for a very modest addition, you know, it's a master bedroom, it's 13 by 11, it's not, you know, a large bedroom at all, it's just very constricted with the current site.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Anybody to be heard on, anybody?
Just a question, I may have looked at it wrong.
Go.
The neighborhood was at 27 Eightbells, that's directly to the north? Because I looked at it, I thought it was to the south.
To the north.
All right, let's have a reading.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, with respect to appeal number 2022-042, I move that in, the appeal of Nargis, Second Skaya, 23 Eightbells Road, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-13-4-25, an RA 40 zoning, for variances and or relief from town code chapter 301, section 11, with proposed side yard setback of 8.01 feet when 25 foot is required, proposed front yard setback of 19.7 feet when 50 foot is required, and proposed combined side yard setback of 15.58 feet when 55 foot is required, and proposed interior surface 23.7% when 15% is required. Be granted in accordance with the application sketches with the amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Shalom.
All right, let's start with Mr. Barnes.
Hi.
Mr. Gazillo.
Hi.
Mr. Whitmire.
Hi.
Mrs. Zaweski.
Hi.
I vote aye, see, appeal's been granted?
Thank you very much.
And we'll see you in another two years, pull out the bat?
Probably like two seconds.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would never come back.
Okay, you got your variance.
Thank you very much.
Everyone want to go, and nobody's here.
I think he's here.
Oh, you're here for both?
That was the two seconds.
That was the two seconds.
Appeal 2022-043, Daniel Stanley Nowaski, 58 Lewin Drive, Weyden River, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-27-1-2, RB 80 zoning, for variances and or relief from town code chapter 301-29A-1D, side yard setback per shed under 144 square feet, the 3.4 foot minimum required is five.
Okay, again, you have to swear again. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so we got it.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Okay, it's Jeff Zong, my office is located 215 Roanoke Avenue. Okay, the application we have before us is to legalize a pre-existing shed that has been on the property in this location approximately since 2001, if you look at the historical aerials. I've done work on this house for the previous owners, and I think this all came to stem when we did the, we did some bulkhead work right after Sandy, and the permit lapsed, and they never got the CO for the work. And when they were going to sell the house to the current owner, which was probably within, probably about a year ago, then they, you know, when they sold the house and buying the house, they realized that there was no CO for the retaining wall, which then they were legalizing everything, and when the inspectors came, they realized that the shed has, you know, is too close to the property line, probably just about, like about a foot and a half, five foot's required, and I think it's like 3.4 feet. And the hard, you know, the hardship to relocate the shed, I mean, it's only 18 inches to move it, but there's a pre-existing deck here, and you would have to really reconstruct the deck to move that shed. The shed is a part of the Lewin Hills Property Association, so, you know, they've had no problems with this shed being there for the last 20 years.
I don't, I don't have a problem. Anybody, no, nobody in the audience objecting, so let's have a reading.
Mr. Chairman, I move the appeal of 2022-43 of Stanley Nowaski, 58 Lewin Drive, Suffolk County Tax Map number 62712. It's in the RB 80 zoning district. Variance is a relief from the town code chapter 301, 29A-1D. Side yard setback is 3.4 feet, and the minimum required is five feet. In accordance with the application and sketches with the amendments thereto, if any, filed with the building status, be approved.
Second. Mr. Barnes.
Hi.
Mr. Gazillo.
Hi.
Mr. Whitmire.
Hi.
Mrs. Zaweski.
Hi.
And I vote aye.
Thank you very much. That's good, thank you.
It's like Ernie Banks, you know, let's play two. Okay.
I appreciate your time. Have a merry Christmas.
Do I hear motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting? All in favor? Let's adjourn the meeting to the next meeting. All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a nice night.